Good evening, and welcome to the January twelfth Regular Board of Education Meeting for the Kings Park School District. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Kings Park Board of Education. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded. We're going to start our meeting with a presentation. It's a student recognition for our poster contest that's run by our Transportation Department. Dr. Egan?
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome. It's great to see so many student faces on our Zoom call this evening. For the past several years, we've had a bus poster safety contest. We began this contest after a very unfortunate incident where a student was injured getting on his bus in the morning. I want to personally thank our Transportation Department, our bus drivers, Mr. Lee, and in particular Monica Broderick for their leadership in making this happen. And of course, our students for doing such an absolutely wonderful job with their artwork. We have three winners, a third place, a second place, and a first place for each school. Each of our winners is going to get a certificate from the district and an Amazon gift card. The Amazon gift cards are $10 for third place, $20 for second place, and $30 for first place. The gift cards were funded through donations through my FundMe site, GoFundMe site earlier in the fall. Most of the donations came in from employees and district presidents, and we're really thankful for the support for this contest. So I'm gonna apologize in advance if I pronounce anybody's name wrong. But we'll start with Fort Solanga and we'll work towards the high school. In third place at Fort Solanga, we have Samantha Philling. Congratulations, Samantha, great job. In in second place, Fort Solanga, we have Autumn Wiper. Congratulations, Autumn. And in first place, Fort Solanga, we have Judah Millen. Congratulations to our Fort Solanga winners. At Parkview, in third place, we have Elena Adams. Second place is Claire Sims. And first place at Parkview, Anton Wong. Congratulations to our winners there. At RJO, in third place, Ashlyn Richter. In second place, Taylor Bouladis. And in first place, Olivia Capaccio. Congratulations, Olivia. And I want, I'm gonna just pause for, um, actually, forget I said that, we'll just keep going with with our winners here. William, William T. Rogers. In third place, we have Ashley Fendrickson. Congratulations, Ashley. In second place, we have Gia Paluka. I'm pretty sure I pronounced that wrong, I'm sorry about that. Congratulations, Gia. And in first place, William T. Rogers, Maya Lupinachi. Congratulations, Maya. And at the high school, in third place, we have Nicholas Porincek. Congratulations, Nicholas. Second place is Elena Cruz. And first place is Maya Plexer. Congratulations, Maya. And we'll get, um, all of our students a little bit more recognition in my highlight of the week at the end of the week. And we'll include a couple of examples of the students' artwork in them. And again, um, students, you'll get your awards at school. We'll get those awards delivered tomorrow, and you'll probably get your award, you know, later, later this week. And again, congratulations, thank you for your continued support of not only our transportation program, but also our art program, and of course, safety on the bus. Great job, students.
Thank you so much, Dr. Egan. Congratulations to all of our winners. This is, this contest has been going on for a few years now. It is such a wonderful thing that the Transportation Department has, has done for our district. You can always count on them, they're just a wonderful group of people. And again, congratulations to all of our winners. I also neglected to say at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Bianco is joining us virtually. He is, um, he's at home. Mr. Johnston and Mr. Two cannot be with us tonight. Okay, so I know we look a little sparse up here. But we're going to move on to public comments right now. The Board of Education will hear public comments that address voting items on tonight's agenda only at this time. Speakers must state their first and last names through district clerk and then address their comments to the board. Comments by any individual may not exceed three minutes. A visible timer will be used to monitor this timeline. The public comment sections of this meeting will not exceed 30 minutes in total. In fairness to all speakers who exceed the three-minute limit and do not finish my ask will be muted. Due to confidentiality concerns, the board does not permit speakers to raise issues concerning a specific student or a specific personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the board convenes. Do we have any public comments for the voting items on tonight's agenda only? If you have a question, if you have a comment, please just raise your hand or use the little icon. All right, we're not seeing anyone. All right, so we will go on to our consent agenda. Approval of the minutes, December fifteenth, regular meeting and budget workshop. I will make a motion to approve. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is new business, a non-voting item. Notice of subdivision for Cox Chopping, Dr. Egan?
Okay, occasionally, the district is obligated to share pieces of information publicly. But we take no position on this subdivision whatsoever. So there, there is a subdivision in Kings Park that is currently planned. It's a two-lot subdivision between Meadow Glen Road and Berry Hill Drive along a private right-of-way between those two roads. It's a two-lot subdivision. Typically, this, this would come on really large paper. And it's really, really tiny writing that we, we might need a magnifying glass to read. But if we have any residents that would like a little bit more information about this proposed subdivision, again, it's two lots between Meadow Glen Road and Berry Hill Drive along a private way-of-way. Reach out to the, the district clerk or the district, and we can get you more information on that.
Next is the discussion concerning the 2021-2022 calendar. Dr. Egan?
Okay, we have, um, we have two versions of the 2021-2022 calendar that are connected to tonight's agenda. There's a, an A, a draft A and a draft B. One of the challenges that we have looking at next year's calendar is that Labor Day is really late again. Labor Day is on September sixth with Rosh Hashanah on the seventh and the eighth. So the first day of school for the 2021 school year is actually September ninth. It's a Thursday, which is very late. That being said, it makes it very difficult to get 180 days of school in with some of the other constraints that we have. So, um, what we did was if, if you take a look at some point at draft B, which right now is, is my preferred draft, we started with A and then we went to B. With draft B, we are in school on Election Day. It is a, a non, it's, it's an odd year next year, so Election Day will be extremely light. We have been, we have had school on an Election Day before. Obviously, we did not do that this past fall for, for good reason. But we do not expect nearly the voter turnout that we had this past fall. We would have school on Election Day. And what that allows us to do is to be off on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is a day that I know the community really appreciates. The, the calendar has one included snow day in it, which becomes, you know, a little challenging to get three snow days into the calendar. There's one very clear snow day, which is the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. The two remaining snow days would be during the April break. Now, what I, what I will share is that the State Education Department is letting districts this year pilot a remote learning day on what would have been a snow day. We chose to not do that for the last snow event that we had for, for a variety of reasons. But that is a possibility moving forward. So one of the things that we could include in the development of next year's calendar is one clear snow day. If we need a second or a third snow day and we can, since we want to preserve that April vacation, we could go to a remote learning day for snow days beyond that first snow day. If we're able to do that, then we have everything that we would typically want in a calendar. And it's pretty straightforward, it's just that one decision point that becomes important. What we would do with, with those two remaining snow days that we would typically put into a calendar. So that's where we are right now. What we will typically do is communicate not only with Western Suffolk Bosie's, who helps to guide this discussion in the region, but also try to align as best we can with some other local area school districts in, in Western Suffolk, in particular Smithtown, Northport, and Comac. We usually look at those three districts and see if everybody else is seeing things the way we are. And hopefully, we'll get this wrapped up in the next meeting or two, because believe it or not, we start planning for, for next year fairly soon.
So this, this, an excellent chance that we will not know what State Ed is going to do as far as remote days, just no dates next year before we include this calendar.
Correct, we, we may not know the final answer if State Ed is, is going to expand their pilot beyond this year for remote days. I would think that they would. But that is still kind of an open question that, you know, we'd have to asterisk somewhere on the, the calendar that eventually is adopted by the school district.
Right, okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Egan. Any questions?
I just want to comment, I'd, I'd like to make, and I know we talked about it for this past snow day that we had, taking into consideration the weather for that particular storm. This past storm, my neighborhood was out eight hours. So we're not sure who would be out, who would have electric, you know, depending on what, what the weather conditions are. So I think that has been considered, and if we do adopt the calendar, we can always then make a change if we had to after State Ed either approves or disapproves. But, okay. But I would just want to just make a change, you know, we're gonna get the same amount of days in, just that depending on what type of weather we're having, and it was a good call that we had a snow day that day, would be my only apprehension about going remote.
Bianca, any questions or comments?
No, I think that covers it, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the personnel schedule. Mr. Craig?
Good evening, everyone. Just a few items to highlight on the personnel schedule this evening. For non-instructional staff, we do have the appointment of Thomas Redder as a leave replacement in William T. Rogers Middle School. And for our non-instructional staff, you'll see a change of salary for our school monitors. That is just reflective of the change in minimum wage as of the new year from thirteen to fourteen dollars. And then we have some retirements on there of Mr. Steve Lee, Transportation Supervisor will be retiring at the end of August. And Mr. Lawrence Russo, one of our bus drivers, is retiring. And Ms. Marilyn Sabella, one of our drivers assistants in transportation. And keep in mind that we'll have a chance to recognize all our retirees at our May board meeting, which hopefully will be in person. And that's the personnel schedule.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig. Any comments or questions from the board? I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is authorization to sign allowance authorization and change order. Mr. Craig?
So this resolution is for the work at RJO, the roof to the contractor Milcon. The first part is an allowance authorization for $9,635. That was for some flashing and roof decking that was needed. And then the second part is a change order, which is a credit back to the district for the unused portion of the allowance authorization for $24,259. And if the board recalls that we had done financial updates in November, so this is already included in that financial update, so this is kind of the paperwork now catching up to what we anticipated the cost to be.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions from the board? I will make a motion to approve. A second.
Aye. Aye.
Whereas project managers and architects have notified the district of the need to incorporate certain changes into the above capital project, now therefore, we resolve that Board of Education approves the following allowance authorization and change order as listed below and give Board President authorization to sign said documentation. And we want to authorization to sign transfer for the Department of Buildings and Buildings and Grounds for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Craig?
So this is just a request to transfer $35,000 into our custodial supplies line within the Buildings and, and Grounds budget code, coming from other lines such as maintenance, electric, and heating. And the rationale is to continue to buy masks, sanitizer, wipes, disinfectant, all the things we need to keep our schools clean and safe going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions from the board? I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the following transfer in the amount of $35,000 for the Department of Buildings and Grounds for the 2020-2021 school year to cover shortages in the custodial supplies code as listed below due to unanticipated purchases of PPE needed to open school 9/20, September 2020. Moving on to new business, donation of gifts. As per district policy, all donations must be accepted by the board. I will make a motion to approve. A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education gratefully accepts the following donations. Mr. Joseph Dowie is donating 50 used tennis balls to the RJO Intermediate School. Value of donations unknown. The Kings Park Athletic Booster Association is donating $3,500 for the purchase of solar panels to operate the new high school softball schoolbook, softball scoreboard. Total value of donations to date for the 2020-2021 school year is $40,443. Thank you for those donations. Next is the disposal of equipment. As per district policy, all disposals must be approved by the board. I will make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor? Resolve that the Board of Education authorizes the disposal of the following equipment. The Director of Technology and Data Systems is requesting permission to dispose of non-useable computers, monitors, switches, and telephones per the attached list. All items are obsolete, obsolete technology and are not compatible for use in our district. Acceptance of recommendation to add verified new vendors to the approved district vendor list. As per district policy, all vendors must be approved by the board before any payment can be made. I will make a motion to approve. I'll second. All those in favor? Resolve that the Board of Education accepts the recommendation to add verified new vendors to the approved district vendor list per the attached documentation. Next, we'll move on to authorization to sign health service agreements Uniondale UFSD and Huntington UFSD for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Egan?
These agreements will provide health services for students parentally placed in private schools located in Huntington and New Uniondale UU Free School Districts.
Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the health service agreements for the 2020-2021 school year as listed below. Next is authorization to sign contracts with service providers for the 2020-2021 school year. Dr. Egan?
The Northport East Northport contract will provide for instructional programs for some of our students with disabilities that require specialized instruction. In addition, presented this evening is an addendum to a previously approved contract that will allow for telehealth services for students on remote instruction.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby gives the Board President permission to sign new attached contracts with the following service providers for the 2020-2021 school year as listed below. Authorization of CSE meeting recommendations. Dr. Egan?
This agenda item includes minutes from 36 CSE meetings that were held between the dates of November fifth and January fifth.
Thank you, Dr. Egan. Any questions from the board? I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached individualized educational programs, IEPs, from January, I'm sorry, November fifth, 2020, to January fifth, 2021, thirty-six in total. And we are now up to special reports and announcements from the superintendent. Dr. Egan?
All right, good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year. It's good to see everybody, and it's great to see so many of us. Want to start by again just wishing everybody a Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a happy holiday. If you, if you didn't get to see it, I see one of our, one of our Um, if you, if you didn't get to see it, uh, I see one of our, one of our music teachers on, uh, the Zoom this evening. We had a link to an RJO, uh, holiday musical last Friday. It'll absolutely make you smile and make you laugh. We had a little, little holiday improv in there and, uh, it was a lot of fun. So, uh, look, look for that link. It was in last week's highlight and then I, I, it was an error in the link originally, but we, I think we got that fixed and I think you'll enjoy that. I have a rather large COVID nineteen update this evening, so just bear, bear with me for a few minutes. We, um, we are still very well poised if we need to to engage in in-school COVID testing. Uh, the state seems to have pivoted a little bit to focus on the vaccination rollout right now. Uh, but potentially depending on the numbers in our area and the numbers on Long Island, um, yellow, orange and red zone in-school testing is still possible. We do have plans ready in hand and student and staff volunteers so that we can do that testing and keep our schools open for in-person instruction, which I know is, is what the community really wants. So, um, no real update there, but I just wanted the board to know that, uh, we're still ready with that plan should that in-school testing be required. Again, the, the in-school testing piece is not a choice. Really for us, it would be something that the state would, would designate and it would be a mandate for us to engage in that if we want to keep our schools open. The state began, uh, recently with their phased-in vaccination plan. One A has been underway for a couple of weeks. One B started on, uh, Monday yesterday. So there are various eligible categories in both one A and one B. If been update that I sent out earlier today, there's a link to see if you are in one of those eligible groups. Uh, school employees and contractors that work in schools are eligible under one B. There are currently five point three million individuals that fall under the eligibility in either one A or one B. Um, New York State is receiving from the federal government about three hundred thousand vaccinations per week. So if you do a little bit of math, it, it's going to take us probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about fourteen weeks or so to, uh, work through one A and one B. Uh, please refer to the state website if you have any questions on, on your eligibility. If we look at our, our current reality, uh, not only in Kings Park, but around the country. Um, locally, our numbers are down a little bit. Uh, we had spiked right after the, the holidays in between Christmas and New Year's. Last week, we were, we were up in percentage in terms of, um, COVID numbers. This week, and the seven-day average is down a little bit, which is, which is promising. Uh, we need that to continue to improve, which would be great. Many of the cases that we're seeing right now in, in Kings Park are family spread. And those individuals have already been home, which has been, uh, super helpful in order to keep our, our schools safe and clean. Um, we're doing our, our very absolute very best to stay open and keep as many of our students and employees in school as possible. Um, I will point out that again, we, we continue to be open. Um, there were eleven of eighteen districts before the holidays in our region that were closed for various reasons right before the holidays. And last week, there were eight out of eighteen districts in Western Suffolk that were closed for, for various reasons, either for a day or two or the whole week. Um, there are actually two districts in Western Suffolk that were closed for in-school instruction all of last week and all of this week. Uh, we, we've been, uh, very, very diligent. We've been able to stay open, which has been great. Um, I did mention we've, we've been a little tight in the area of transportation, which is something we're keeping a close watch on if, um, if we did have an, an issue there that could force us to go to remote instruction for a period of time. Uh, but we've been working very carefully to make sure that, that, that doesn't happen. Um, unfortunately, not always in our circle of influence in terms of who is sick and who is under mandatory quarantine at any particular time. One, one thing that I do want to share this evening that I think, uh, kind of puts things in perspective. And I came across this, um, a couple of weeks ago. It was passed on to me by, by a colleague of mine. So if you look at the deadliest days in US history, you'll find a, a hurricane in nineteen eight thousand people lost their lives on that particular day. That was the deadliest day in, in US recorded history. The second most deadliest day on that list is the Battle of Antietam, the Civil War. It was the most deadliest battle of the Civil War, mostly because it was Americans fighting Americans. And thirty-six hundred and fifty Americans lost their life on September seventeenth, eighteen sixty-two. The nine eleven terrorist attacks, September eleventh, two thousand and one. Two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven individuals lost their life that day. Uh, we recognize that day every year. Um, but I want to point out it's just under three thousand individuals that lost their life that day. The deadliest terror attack in US history. The deadliest attack on US soil was Pearl Harbor nineteen forty-one. Approximately two thousand four hundred military individuals at Pearl Harbor lost their life that day. So why am I, why am I pointing this out? Because on January seventh, twenty twenty-one, that was just last week, four thousand one hundred and eighty US citizens lost their life to the coronavirus. That makes it the second deadliest day in US history. Just to put things in perspective, the seven-day rolling average in our country is approximately three thousand one hundred and nineteen individuals, which is larger than both the nine eleven terrorist attacks and Pearl Harbor. So while we, we are very fortunate that we have been able to keep schools open and, and moving forward and providing education. Um, I think we also need to acknowledge the, the times that we live in and the struggles that many, many of our residents and many residents around the country are experiencing right now. Um, it's truly a unique time that, that we live in. Um, I am I am, uh, more positive every day as we move towards the spring, knowing that the vaccination program is underway in New York State. Um, I do know that vaccinations are a personal choice and that's absolutely fine. Uh, the, the percentage of the population that we need immune to COVID nineteen is somewhere in the seventy to ninety percent range. Um, so there will be some individuals who, who will not be comfortable getting a vaccine and that's absolutely fine. Um, I know that many of our employees happen to be very excited that they were able to make appointments earlier this week. So the, the last thing I want to touch on that, that I get asked, um, just about every day is when do I think schools will go back to normal? Answer to that, I think we need to see definitely what happens over the next few weeks in our area. I think it'll be very telling in terms of the numbers and the spread of COVID on Long Island. Um, if you look around the state, we are one of the higher areas right now. Um, numbers have come down a little bit and hopefully that will continue. But something definitely needs to change in terms of Department of Health guidance, CDC guidance, or the number of individuals who are immune to the virus. Um, I do hope that one of those three things changes at some point in the not-too-distant future. But those are the, the three really important things that would impact any potential changes that we're looking to make. We need less cases of COVID. We need more people immune to it. And we need the, the guidance and restrictions to be modified on a state level before we really, um, seriously consider any modifications. On a positive note, I have, uh, three, three or four, uh, really positive things I want to add tonight as well. Um, coming soon to an, an area off of Main Street. Um, Kings Park is currently working with the Kings Park Chamber, the Comac Kings Park Rotary Club and the Town of Smithtown on a sharing table. Uh, we're, we're hoping to get that up and running by the end of January. Um, if you don't know what a sharing table is, just Google it. But it, it's an area of your community where people can leave food and perhaps clothing for, for less fortunate individuals. And people can, um, can take what they need from that table as well. So, um, again, look for that. It's going to be probably located at Savat Park, which is right where our, our drama club was presenting this past fall. We're looking at that area, which is right between Main Street and the train station. Um, super excited, uh, not only because I'm the superintendent of Kings Park, because I have a, a strong science background. We had a Regeneron scholar that was just recently named last week, Julia Salati at the high school. So congratulations to Julia and our science department on a job well done. Um, the Regeneron used to be the Intel Science Talent Search. Um, it's the, it's the same competition. It's got a slightly different name. Three hundred scholars are chosen from across the countries. We had six hundred and eleven high schools that had students that, um, competed in this competition. We're super fortunate to have Julia and, and, uh, Mrs. Fay and our research teachers and science teachers that do a great job in that area. So congratulations to the high school and our science department. It is the most prestigious science and math competition in the, in the country for high school students. So well done. And last but not least, um, if you missed it, each year the Times Beacon does Persons of the Year. There were, uh, two individuals that were, uh, focused on in, in this year's edition, who are either connected to Kings Park or residents of Kings Park. We had, um, Scope Educational Services was nominated for all the work they did with childcare during the pandemic. Scope is run by George Duffy, who is, uh, a Kings is located in Smithtown. And they just did an absolutely amazing job as being a, a regional hub for first responders and, uh, healthcare workers and childcare during the pandemic. So great job, Scope. And our other nominee is Kathleen Weinberg from Aramark. Kathleen is the head cook in Kings Park. She's also a, a Kings Park resident. She single-handedly assisted and, and really her leadership led to about three hundred students getting fed during the pandemic. Um, many, many families owe the food that was on the table that night to the work that Kathleen did through Aramark and, uh, their hub was located at Kings Park High School. So very, very deserving of being a Person of the Year. Kathleen, great job. We, we appreciate everything that you do for us every day. And that's my update.
Thank you so much. That, that update had a lot of information and, um, it's, it's always good to hear about our science program. They do wonderful, they do wonderful things every year. And George Duffy and Kathleen, um, very deserving. George is a Kings Park graduate who graduated, um, many years ago and has, has a deep love for Kings Park. I just wanted to ask about, um, you had said the numbers are going down. Do you, do you have the, the numbers handy? Like
The, um, the, the numbers tend to vary depending on which source you're, you're looking at. Um, and the numbers can be a little deceiving because in, in many cases, um, individuals will receive more than one test. They may receive a rapid test and a PCR test, which takes a couple of days to, to come back. Um, but I, I do track whether they're up or down on a daily basis and, and a, a, a week, a weekly average. Um, they have come down a little bit. We were flirting with, with nine, ten percent for a little bit. Um, they have come down a little lower than, than that, which is good. Uh, we, we are still substantially higher than we were back in September and October, uh, which is why that, that's still a little alarming. Um, but, you know, the, uh, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but if, if anyone does want to track the numbers, there's a, there's a state website and a tool that you can use to do that and they, they update that at four PM every day and it's by county. Um, there's also a tool that's connected on the Newsday site that you can enter a zip code or a particular community. I don't know exactly where those data pull from. Um, so I do look at them as well, but I focus on the data on the state website because that's what the governor uses to, um, to push his decisions in terms of in-school testing. Uh, but it will kind of give you an idea of whether things are up or down or stable or improving or, or not improving.
Okay. And, and the numbers that you gave us, um, as states and district, um, it's just, it's heartbreaking, the, the number of lives that have been lost and, and you're right, we have been very lucky to be able to keep schools open. And I, I just, I commend our teachers, our students, our parents, everybody following the rules for, for keeping our schools safe. It's just, which I, I, I think we're doing a great job. So, um, thank you very much. And also too, I think the, um, you mentioned about the vaccine and being available and teachers and staff being excited to have gotten appointments. Um, I know that, that those websites kind of crashed overnight and, um, it, I, I guess it just goes to show the overwhelming number of people who are ready to be vaccinated and, and, you know, start us on the road to getting back to normal here. So, thank you very much for all your information. Um, any comments from the board?
So, Dan, I'll, I'll piggyback off that and I would agree. Thank you for all the information. And, and folks going, I know, and as you said, it's a personal choice about the vaccine. Um, but I'd echo the thanks to, to staff, students and families about, you know, the, the part that they all play in keeping us open. And the need to keep at that because hopefully the pace of the vaccines pick up. But Dr. Egan, as you said, at three hundred thousand a week with a population of almost twenty, twenty million people, that's over a year to vaccinate everybody. So we still have a long way to go. Hopefully that pace picks up and it takes less time than that. Um, but we need people to, to stay diligent and, and, you know, just wish everybody the best and good health. On a, on maybe a more positive note, um, to show that we can get to the other side. I was on the, on a call with a colleague today who, um, comes from China and went home for, um, six or eight weeks around the holidays. They had to, she had to quarantine for fourteen days in a hotel when she got there. But we asked her how it was and she was in Shanghai. She said it was just like it was before. They have very, very few cases, if any, and people are out not wearing masks, going about their business, going to restaurants and, and theaters and things like that. So there is, there is another side to this, so we, we will get there. But I thought that was pretty interesting. But I thought that was pretty interesting to hear. They actually, folks there are not getting vaccinated because they don't feel the need because they've, they've controlled the spread there. So there, there is a way through this. I was a little jealous, but other than that.
All right, we all just all want to be back to normal. I mean, there's nothing that we want more than to have schools open the way they were before this pandemic because, you know, there, there's nothing that can take place of everything being available for the children. So hopefully very soon.
I, I just wanted to touch on, Diane, Dr. Egan talked about the sharing table. I think it truly speaks to our community. I know it's going to be with other surrounding communities, but we can always keep that in mind. They're always less fortunate. There is, it's a, we're in a world where we're on uncharted waters, and we may not have everything we want, but together we'll have everything we need. And I think as a community, we will do that together. So thank you for all those who are contributing to the sharing table.
Yes, very good point. Thank you, Mr. Board. Okay, so we are now going to go to public comments. The Board of Education will hear additional public comments. Please follow the procedures outlined for the public comment session earlier in this meeting. In addition, please note that the board will take no action at tonight's meeting. Do we have anyone with any public comments? Please use your little icon or raise your hand.
I have comments. John Hagan.
Excuse me?
Hello? John Hagan has comments?
John Hagan. Okay.
I just want to go, I just want to go over a couple of things. I appreciate all the work you guys do and teachers and stuff like that and keeping the school safe and stuff like that. I have four kids in the district. Actually, I have three right now. One just graduated last year, though she went through this half, half the year last year. I have a senior, I have a junior, and I begin eighth grade also. So we're going on the second half of the year. We, we, we are almost getting there. So just want to know, what is the plan to get these kids back into sports or on the field or, or do something like that? Other states are doing it, whether it's New Jersey, Connecticut, doing wrestling. These kids are missing out. Education, education.
You say sports. John, you cut out. Did you say sports?
Sports, yes.
Okay.
Other, other, other states are doing it. New Jersey, Connecticut, Pennsylvania. You have kids in wrestling who are missing out this year. Kids in basketball right now missing out this year. We, kids keep on getting promised dates. On August 21st, they had a date. That was beginning of the sports, right? Then they got, they got pushed off to September 21st. And yet some sports could play, some sports couldn't comply. Then we got into January 4th. We have half the sports playing now. We have some sports not playing. Doesn't seem any consistent. What's going on? I just like to know what you guys are doing, Dr. Egan, the board, reaching out to local representatives, state representatives, to help these kids get back into it. What is the plan? So one thing I want to know is, when can the weight room reopen? The weight room, there's gyms open around, around this, around the state. I think we can trust our coaches to keep it safe for the kids. Also, you have cohort A and B. There's, there's some, there's some coaches doing it together. There's some coaches doing it separate. I know Winter Track right now just started up. They're doing it together. I know football, maybe lacrosse are doing it separate. What, what's, what's the message we're sending there? Can we get them playing together at the same time with the kids? What else we got? Like the bottom line is that education is great for the kids, but also sports is part of the education. Team, team spirit, school spirit. I know, Dr. Egan, you're on Section 11 Executive Board. I'd like to know what, what Section 11 is doing to get these kids back on. Because I don't want it to happen again to March 4th. When we get to these kids, when we get to that date, and guess what's going to happen? We're going to pull, we're going to pull the plug on some sports, and some sport's going to play. I know it's, I know it's not, it's not a ideal time for this to happen, but I just like to know what is going on. I just, I like, it's frustrating as a parent when you look at your kid and it's right after, right after Christmas break, and they sit down, they go, I have nothing to look forward to. So I have nothing to look forward to. Good.
So thank you, Mr. Hagan, for your, your comment. So you, you did run out of time, but I, I will provide just a, just a quick answer. The, the state and the Department of Health have provided lists of sports by risk priority, low, moderate, and high risk. That's done at the state level and supersedes me. It supersedes Section 11. It supersedes the, the State Athletic Association. Currently, high-risk sports in the state of New York have not been cleared to, to start. The current season that started on January 4th includes winter track. It includes bowling and includes swimming. So that's why those sports are, are operating right now. Something would need to change, one of, one of the things that I mentioned earlier, in order for the, the state to, to make a modification so we could do, we could do more, we could do something different. So currently, what are we doing? What's our plan? We're following the association, the Department of Health and the governor. And if at some point that guidance changes or loosens up, you know, we, we will certainly follow that guidance and, and, you know, to the greatest extent that we can, that we can, we'll get the kids on the field and, and competing. But unfortunately, we, we do need to be in line with, with the guidance coming from the state, and that's why we're, we're currently at where we are. No one would like sports to be more involved right now than me as a former athlete, but we do need to make sure that we're aligned with the guidance coming from the state.
Who, who is pushing back to the state that, that like, the numbers aren't there, and other states are doing it? Why aren't we pushing back a little bit as a board, as a school district, as Section 11, as a county? Like, why can others, others, other sports do this? They're having, they're having college games on Long Island. They're having football games on, on New York State. Like, these kids, high school kids are being punished. And I, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe they are a low rate of, of spreading or dying or anything else, else like that.
And so I would just like to say, we just mentioned we'd like to have our kids back in school full-time, and we can't do that. Dr. Egan just alluded to the numbers, what's going on. So I think we have to put our priorities, what's most important, and I think that's health right now. I understand your concern. We also just said we may not have what we want, but we have to be thankful for what we have. So I understand the concern. We all understand the concern. We're almost going on a year of this. I hear frustration. I think we all have that same frustration. But I think health and safety is our number.
All right, I guess, no answer.
Two, two things, I think, John. One, one, I think there's nothing stopping any of us individually from advocating, whether it's through local organizations or individually with, with state representatives and whatnot for, for how we feel about different, different things in the community and the school district. And as you know, my kids are all very, have, have been and continue to be very involved in sports. So it's something near, near and dear to me, and, and we miss as a family as well. Dr. Egan, correct me if I'm wrong, just to one of John's comments, the, the difference between the cohorts. I think winter track, because it's in-season, is both cohorts. And the other sports that are just doing off-season conditioning, to the extent possible, is the cohorts that are in school that day. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. And the, the cohort that is showing up for track that was not in school is not using the locker room or the school. They're just, just like a club team. They're, they're showing up to practice and, and they're running, and then they're going home. One of the, the can, the largest concerns is locker room safety and density in the locker room. We did have a, a local spreading event that involved locker rooms. It was, it wasn't a school-spreading event. It was, it was an adult club team where the locker room was, was ultimately found to be the source of the spread. So, so that, that's something that school districts are super concerned about. And, you know, we're, we're literally fighting every day to be able to have enough staff to continue, to continue school. I'm reading that right now, especially with the numbers being high. So, you know, as, as much as I'd love to be able to do some, some more things on some other levels, including sports, right now, we're just trying to stay, stay the, stay the path and, and keep things moving forward and healthy and safe.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? You can use your hand icon if you want to. Or if you have a question and we can't see you, you can just speak, speak up. Okay.
I don't see any of it.
All right. So we're up to important dates. January 18th is Martin Luther King Day. Schools are closed. January 26th is the next Board of Education meeting and budget workshop at 7:30. And January 29th is Superintendent's Conference Day, and schools are closed. I want to thank everyone for joining us tonight for our meeting. And please stay healthy and safe. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. A second, will I, favor?
Aye.
Thank you again. Good night, everyone. Good night.